Call the meeting to order tonight. It's May 18, 2021. Regular city council meeting of the City of West Liberty, Iowa. We did have a brief workshop earlier tonight before this meeting regarding the fiscal year 21 budget amendments. Tonight, we do have three council members with us, Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Rock, Councilmember McFerrin. Absent tonight is Councilmember Brannick and Councilmember Zacharias. You do have a warrant to hold a meeting. And also in attendance is City Treasurer/Clerk Lee Gertz and interim City Manager Elizabeth Hansen. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion.
Oh, sorry. Yes. I'm drawing a blank, god dang it. Jamie Boston. Boston, Jamie Boston. I always think of Boston legal when I see you being the attorney. So we do have our city attorney, Jamie Boston, with us tonight also.
Motion to approve agenda.
Motion to approve. Second, is there any further discussion?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, who's second?
Dave.
Thank you.
Hearing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Passes three zero. First item on the agenda tonight is swearing in two new police officers. Chief Lehrer, do you have officers here? I did kind of put away if there was any photos or anything that anybody have Officer Alex Accalini and Officer Samantha Wheeler. If anyone goes ahead and raise their right hand. And so I'm going to say, state your name, say please. We've had where you said state your name, so I wanted to make sure. So I state your name.
I state it.
Deuce Solomon Lee Swair. I support the Constitution of the United States.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will applaud faithfully.
And faithfully.
And impartially.
And actually.
All duties.
Discharge all duties.
As police officer of the City of West Liberty, Iowa.
As police officer of the City of West Liberty, Iowa.
And hereafter required by law.
As now and hereafter required by law.
Congratulations. Dave?
Yes.
And is there anyone that needs to get a photo with family or anybody else with the new officers?
Here, Dave. Dave, right there. Okay, you want to take a picture?
Yeah. I get in.
Mary, you want to get in? Mary, you want one? I'm going to take my Facebook, so. One, two, three. One, two, three. Congratulations.
You can take one without me. You want to take one without me?
One, two, three.
Okay, and usually you only have one of these. So if there's some family members that want to come up and take a photograph. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Okay, congratulations.
Congratulations. Welcome.
We got a seller. You have a Facebook issue, God. We need to pause for a moment. Okay. So Jamie, did you ever watch Boston?
Oh, yeah.
Zoom still recording though?
Zoom is recording, yes.
Okay. Okay, we're going to go ahead and proceed. We do have underneath public hearings, a few items. We have the water revenue refunding loan agreements. If anybody would like to make a motion to open that public hearing.
Motion to open a public hearing for water revenue refunding loan agreement.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
We are open three zero. Is there anyone here in the audience that here references public hearing? What reference, the water revenue refunding loan? Is there anyone on Zoom? I see Chip, you did answer questions last time.
You bet.
Okay. Did we get anything from the public reference correspondence or anything referenced this proposal?
No, Mr. Mayor, I haven't received any correspondence from the board. And I'm just trying to.
Okay, so I'll just explain what it really is. Is we're kind of like, you know, individuals would refinance their mortgage for their house. We're kind of refinancing our water loan so we can pass on the savings because the interest rates are low enough that it's worthwhile to go ahead and refine this loan. Chip, is that kind of a brief commentary?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, that's correct. And I can go over details at the appropriate time in your proceedings whenever you would like, so.
Thank you. Okay, since there has been no correspondence, nobody here, we will go ahead and ask for a closing of the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Councilmember?
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
The motion is, or the public hearing is closed, three zero. And line item C is the resolution, take an additional action on the proposal to enter into this water revenue refunding loan agreement. Is there any motion?
Motion to take action on a proposal, enter into the refunding loan agreement, water revenue refunding loan agreement.
It's kind of word weird.
Weirdy.
There's motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. We are going to have to do another roll call. Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Passes three zero. And then the resolution on proposal to enter into the water revenue. Is there, is there a reason?
There's a 2021A and 2021B, so these are two different. Yeah.
Chip, do you, do you have a second? Do you want to just give them an explanation as to why we have two?
You bet. So that, so there ended up being two series because we were able to successfully place the, we're refunding two prior water revenue debt issues, series 2014A and 2016. And we were able to successfully place the refunding those prior debt issues with the two, two community banks in West Liberty. Midwest One is structured to be the lender on the series 2021A. And West Liberty State Bank is structured to be the lender on the series 2021B. In combination, you're, you're taking existing debt that's at an average rate of 2.75% and refunding it with new debt at 1.57%. The 2.75, of course, isn't that terribly high of a rate. But just given the favorable rate environment, you still can take advantage of lower interest rates than what you have now. Overall, the combined savings to the water fund of the city is roughly 223,000. And it, I would just say it's really a good situation because we're able to place the debt with community banks in, in the city and at favorable rates. So both, both debt issues will be paid off and called in on June 22. And the rate on the new refinancing is fixed. There's no rate reset. It's a fixed rate financing through the final maturity date. So that's the brief summary, and I'm very happy to answer any questions you might have.
Chip, I had also had included on our last discussion and with the finance committee, one of the state revolving funds. It has some significant fees. It's a wonderful program, but it has some administrative fees. And we'll also have significant savings from those administrative fees.
Exactly.
Does council have any questions for Chip? Thank you, Chip.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Lee.
To, to a water revenue refunding loan agreement, series 2021B. Action of outstanding bonds.
Yes, sir, it's a second. This motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Passes three zero. It's always nice when we can refinance and pass some savings on to the residents. We do have in front of us now, we are done with the public hearings. The approval of the consent agenda, and this has one item. The regular city council meeting minutes of May 5, 2021.
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Sure, second. Motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Passes three zero. The vendor vouchers claims list is in front of us. We did have to split that up into two claims lists. So we will be looking at a claims list number one in the amount of $198,378.12. And claims list number two would be for $190. So we will go ahead and take both of those separately. Is there a motion to approve claims list number one?
Motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Passes three zero. And we have claims list number two for the $190. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
This motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Just let you know, just in case anybody's wondering, the reason why we did have to do that is Councilmember McFerrin's husband's business, signed business was part of the claims list. And she would have to abstain from that. So instead of having her abstain from all of the vendor vouchers claims, we separated into two so that she only has to abstain on the vote for the claims list that she has a conflict of interest in. Or I don't know if it's a conflict of interest, but some, you know, perception. So I just wanted to explain that if anybody was wondering why we kind of had to split that at the last minute. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Anybody oppose? Passes two zero one, abstention. We are on to public comments and correspondence. Is there anyone in the public here that wishes to address the council? Okay, hearing no one here, is there anyone on Zoom that would like to address the council? Any hands up for anything?
Ken, however, if you just give me a few minutes, I'll just, just through the diligence of coasting.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I do not see any comments.
Thank you. We'll go ahead with council members, Councilmember Smith? Rock, Councilmember Rock? Councilmember McFerrin?
Um, basically, I just got what you have listed under your public comments.
Okay. And we do have these public comments. We have a letter from Donna Faye Sterner, reference the 28E agreement, and an email from David Graham from the golf cart ordinance. Do we have any synopsis of those two?
So again, just Donna Faye, just voicing her concerns. And as stated in your, in the letters, it was my understanding each council and the mayor, you received a mail letter. And we received, as a clerk, I received that letter as well. And then the email with the golf cart ordinance, I think it was just some, based on my understanding, it's just input from the individual asking if we consider.
Signals is one, and also the number of passengers is the other.
Other than that, I haven't had any other.
Well, the only reason I asked was because not, the public doesn't see those. And so I just thought I'd get that out so that they realize what we had received in a quick synopsis of that. Okay. Other than the two that are listed, has the city received any other correspondence?
Most likely.
Okay. And I do not have anything for the council tonight. We are on to old business, and this is going to be the ordinance 20,000, or 2021, 0420-01. And this is the second reading of the ordinance establishing the regulations of operating golf carts, ATVs, and UTVs in the City of West Liberty, Iowa.
Motion to approve second reading.
Motion to approve, and second, is there any further discussion? Questions? Seeing none. Go ahead and take a roll call. Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
The second reading passes three zero. We will have a third reading at the next council meeting, correct?
June 1st.
June 1st, yes. Okay, we are on to new business. It's too bad Diane's not here tonight.
Right.
So we do have a resolution for a change order. And this is Resolution 2021, 0518-26. And this is a approved change order number four, which is in the amount of $12,300 for the police and city hall building improvement project.
Okay.
Lee, do you want me to discuss this a little bit, or are you okay?
I make my motion. Motion for change order number four.
Second. There's a motion in a second?
Yes, now we'll explain.
Okay. Sorry about that. So what I understand about this change order is this is a change, there are some definite changes that have to, have to be done. They're, they're in regard to the furring and some drywall in some of the offices in the restroom. A little over one of the doors, it wasn't as long as we had thought it was after they, after they demoed, they found that out. And then because of that furring problem, some electrical item. It gets some costs, and that's what she showed Lee, and that's why Lee put that on there. Tara's not pleased with the cost, so she went back to the contractor and asked them to relook at doing some things a little bit differently and try and get that price down. So I don't know if you want to wait until the next council meeting to approve that. I, Lee, do you have any advice on that? Because I think it'll be a little different number.
You're okay, can we? And again, as long as it doesn't exceed the amount, then we'll be okay. I guess for, they're, they're, they have been, typically, they like to see the details of the change order. And I know I had received correspondence late from, because I know Tara's been working on this.
Right.
Since I did not have the details of the change order, I guess based on how we historically handle these change orders, my recommendation would be to table it.
I, I, when I found out how this was done, because I thought the same thing. I thought we should get it all in writing so everybody can see it. And I hate to say this, but I'd hate to flip something through that Diane didn't get to beat on us about for anything, so.
It's that the amount is going to change too.
Yes. The amount should go down, and then we'll have it all line item through for the next meeting.
Okay.
All right. And it'll be change order number three, not four, just so you know. All right, so if we table it this time, I think that would be, be wise.
We need to follow through. To table or for the record purpose, I would have a motion. And motion after a motion. Or you've got the motion to approve. So we got to follow through and complete that. And our second. We have a second from Rock, so we can vote it down. We can open a new motion to table.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any further questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Anybody oppose?
Aye.
Okay. The motion has failed zero three. Do you want to take? A new motion?
Yeah, we'll just leave it at that since we voted it down. So no motion, we can just.
And then we'll get a new motion where we have the update.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's go ahead and move on then. We need to set a date for a public hearing on June 1st. This is going to be the amendments to the fiscal year 21 budget. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
This motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Public hearing is set then for the next meeting. We are now on to C, which is this discussion and appropriate follow-up on the Public Safety Committee setting a meeting to discuss West Liberty ambulance board proposal for a fiscal year 2022 staff plan budget and financial transfers.
So I deleted.
Rock?
So I have reached out to the Public Safety Committee, and one of our safety committee members is unavailable. So this, this came after some discussion with the city attorneys working through some things that we did not have in place in the fiscal year 21. But wanting to look forward into 22, we also did not have the opportunity to have this discussion because we had been working on some other discussions with the rural trustees. And so again, after some discussion with attorneys and the public, and a recommendation to the Public Safety Committee is to get together and review staffing, a budget proposal on how to possibly fund the positions that we currently have with the ambulance. I was contacted by Chief Sickles. At the end of last week, they had two paramedics that had resigned due to an opportunity elsewhere. So this brought up a discussion of, again, funding those positions. So that was with my discussion with our attorneys, and then just reaching out to Rock to see if we can create a proposal and then present with the ambulance board to talk. So we're putting the processes in place. And we have something from the ambulance board and the Public Safety Committee. Then in the future, then we could come back to council for their review.
Do you have to wait for the next, the other public safety person?
No.
Okay.
Because I had appointed Dave Smith to fill that member.
That's right, yes, yes, I remember.
So we don't have to wait, you know, for a month.
That's right.
And then, so.
But again, you know, this is on here too, because it's council's direction, having the committee meet to do this or your direction to possibly not proceed with that. Well, I mean, again, that would be.
Councilmember Rock?
We need to have the meeting, we haven't had an ambulance board meeting quite sometimes. So we need to get back to those anyways. But it's hard to budget, and we don't have a staffing plan.
Well, I, I know that, you know, since we're talking about trying to keep those positions, we do have a CARES Act that, you know, has, you know, recently or is going to expire, you know, soon. And we do, you know, have the ambulance, you know, calls that they're not stopping because it's two paramedics. So I, I think that's something that we're going to have to, you know, have the public safety meeting at least meet, and then also then meet with the ambulance board to try to figure out what the staffing and that, so we can have an idea of what, what is even going to be or needs to be presented to council for the next fiscal year.
Yeah. So when, are they supposed to set the meeting tonight, or?
I mean, we can, I can follow up with the committee. And then again, we can make it public as to what they are getting together to, to discuss that if they're not prepared to set it.
The rural trustees out of the field, all that stuff. So never be able to.
I think the, I think the important message is here is that, again, working with council and the Public Safety Committee, you know, supporting that we, you know, we look at this and, and look at the opportunity to fund the positions. This is, had we had some situations where, again, the pandemic's not going away, it's going, you know, it's here to stay. Also, we looked at some other, you know, issues in the rural communities where having, you know, but, you know, folks available during daytime hours to make those calls. And I know council has recognized that, and we've communicated that several times. And so again, this would just, as my understanding is, the ambulance board had requested to have the positions until June 30th. And so we, we want to try to get, you know, something proposed as the new budget year begins. Those, the staffing plan and the positions were not in that budget. So we want to try to, you know, work, you know, quickly, but we also want to be responsible and have it accurate. Make sure we include everyone that needs to be at the table, so.
And who, and who's responsible for making sure that we need to have personnel on the budget?
And I, and.
Yeah, so the, the key, if I may, is that the rural the rural ambulance board had said they wanted to keep these positions going, and they wanted to use the ambulance fund to make up the difference when the grant. And in reviewing the agreements, that ambulance reserve fund has no restrictions on how it can be spent other than, it's supposed to be a decision of the West Liberty Rural Ambulance Board, of which the city has membership and the rural trustees have membership. So if that's what they want to do. So if that's what they want to do, we need to put that together so that they can. Advise, because we're flipping their accounting system around. So we've been running. The reserve fund like an operating fund and we're flipping that around starting July first. So there's going to be a reserve fund. It's a static amount of money. It's going to be a regular rolling operating fund. Like it should have been done years ago. It wasn't, whatever. So there's an opportunity then to project these own call hours, how much they're going to cost. And we can, the rural West Liberty ambulance board can then commit. Reserve funds to pay for that and they will supply that money and then to the city of West Liberty. It'll go into the operating account and we'll have that to work with. And then with some experience in it. We would ask that board again at the end of the year for fiscal year twenty three. Did that work? Did it not work? We'll do a true up of the finances and, and that kind of thing. But they, they want to do it. They've expressed they want to do it. The city's expressed that it's not in the budget. To have these additional hours paid. I don't think they're actual physicians. I think they're, it's paying the volunteers to be on call. So we didn't create new jobs. But we just, we're paying our volunteers to be on call as opposed to just paying them when they run a call. And that's an appropriate expense for that reserve fund. But it should be presented from the West Liberty ambulance board as part of the budget and staffing plan. And then they can allocate the monies, which you can put into the city, on the city's ledger to pay for that. And then the, the budget should balance for the year. And then at the end of the year, the board will be asked again to look at that and say, okay. Is this model sustainable or not sustainable? And if not, what would you propose to do about it? And that's why we have that board is they're at ground level. They can see what's going on. They understand the call volume and the nuances. And so there's, there's absolutely an easy. I'll say easy just as, you know, there's a simplified manner to get it done and, and keep it going and then, and fund it properly. And then provide all those people with the information we need to make future decisions. So that's. But when I talked to Lee, I said, that's really what we need is we need the West Liberty ambulance board to meet. And commit those funds. And then we can transfer them because we want their accounting for them. So we can take that money. July first from the reserve fund and put it in the operating fund. So it's there to pay those wages for the on-call staff going forward. Um, in addition to the monies that the city contributes and the rural trustees contribute to running the ambulance in addition to the revenue. That the ambulance generates from running its calls and billing its patients and that kind of stuff. So.
And that would include any part-time or full-time hire?
Well, if they want to, if they want to add jobs, so right now, as I understand it, the. Ambulance board has one full-time employee, which is the administrator. Every other position is a volunteer. Some of them are being paid to be on call. Right? With, when the pandemic hit, the grant dollars came in and we created this schedule that said. Okay, this volunteer is going to be on call from eight noon and this one's going to be on call from noon before. Whatever it was throughout the week, there were so many hours of on-call hours. But those weren't new jobs. They didn't go through the, the process. We didn't create. Half FTEs or quarter FTEs or anything like that. There's still only one position. Full-time within the city's system in the ambulance department. We just created a new wage scale, if you will, or a new job description. For some of the volunteers to do some extra work and for that they're being paid. So that's what they want to continue. If they want to create additional. Employee equivalents, that's something they can propose. That's something you would have to look at because that's a new position within the city's structure. Because the city is the de facto employer for that ambulance administrator as it sits now. So we would, we would recommend, we would ask them to put that together as proposal. Send it with a job description and, you know, and then go through the standard process that the city has to go through when it does hiring. Utilizing the cooperation of the ambulance, the West Liberty ambulance board. Which is your collaborative entity that can bring all that information together. So. The way I understand it, as the information is presented to me, is that there weren't new jobs that were created. We started paying some volunteers to be on call so that they were dedicated for specific periods of time to ensure a response. And if that's something that they want to continue, certainly do along with the present model. It's just that the city's budget. Didn't allocate additional money for that. The West Liberty ambulance board has said, well, we have reserve funds that we think will be appropriate for that. So they can make that recommendation, that application.
And then if money is taken out of the reserve fund, they have to realize that there is no reserve funding for.
So that's, that's a great big unknown that we would, we would ask the city's representatives to be sure they're monitoring with. The West Liberty ambulance board is that if there's a reserve fund that is a static amount of X. And there's operating expenses and everything throughout the course of the year and revenue. At the end of the year, what is the operating account balance? Is that transferred into the reserve fund? Yes or no? And if that transfer in is less than the amount that was transferred out to pay those wages. Then we can give them a projection that says at this rate. The reserve fund will have no money in, in X amount of time based on its current level. But nobody really knows, to be fair. I mean, this is not been done that way. And the reserve fund for ambulance is not defined the same way as it is for fire. The fire reserve fund. Is clearly defined for capital equipment purchases. The ambulance reserve fund, its only restriction in the agreement is that. The West Liberty ambulance board agree on how to set the line. And, and that board is made up of representatives of both groups. So presumably if both groups. Understand and have directed their members appropriately, the vote will come out the way the vote will come. Well, yeah. So yes, one outcome is possible, but that system will slowly deteriorate the reserve fund. Another outcome is it stays the same. Another outcome is that it maybe doesn't allow for as much contribution at the end of the year. But at the same time, maybe it does for all. And I don't think anybody really knows. Lee's got a guess. But there's so many unknowns from the way the accounting's been done in the past that it's really a guess. And what we do believe is that there is. Well beyond sufficient funds to do this for the next twelve months. To gather information, to gather, just get distance from COVID and allow that governing body to evaluate. Their staffing plan and make sure that they're serving themselves and their citizens the best way possible.
Okay. And one more stupid question?
They're not stupid questions.
Uh, and basic, very basic, but I, I mean, there has to be a point person to. Come up with these figures and determine, make initial determinations to go before their board. And who would that point person be?
I, the members that the West Liberty. That's the public safety committee. Your two council members for that.
Not from the city, from the department themselves.
Well, so the board, the West Liberty ambulance board has membership that you appoint representatives to.
Yeah.
So you can give direction to your members who sit on that board.
Okay.
Um, would be how I would interpret that. And so you have two council members. You have the fire chief and you have, is it the mayor's? I, I, I have to look. I don't have it off the top of my head, but I believe there's four members that you send to that committee. And then there's three that the West Liberty ambulance trustees sent to that committee. And then there's an ex officio. Member who serves as, I don't, I have to opt upon the agreement and look back.
So, and that was for our discussion to, again, with the public safety committee. As Jamie is saying is that, um, is, is to come to a proposal. And that's council sending those numbers to the board with that information. As I understood.
Yeah. I'm sure I've got them here. I'll just. Make sure I have my old copies of everything.
I, I just under the understanding it was the department. The person in charge of the department, I thought was the individual that was supposed to.
It could be, but they're an employee of the board as well. So.
Okay.
Um. The city appoints to the West Liberty ambulance board, the chief of the fire department. The EMS officer of the fire department and two elected officials from the city to serve. The district appoints two members to serve on the board and they jointly select one ex officio member to serve who does not vote. So you're right. So it would be your EMS administrator. It would be Chief Sickles. It would be, I think, your two safe, public safety council members. Then the two that the ambulance board or ambulance trustees have appointed. And I don't know who the ex officio member was. You have to look at your minutes to see who's last on it. I mean, that, that may be an unknown around that quantity at this point. So.
Okay.
The four people that you have probably, you know, combined would be. Appropriate to charge with if we're going to come up with what we think is a good plan to present to that board. So you could choose any one of your committee members or any one of those individuals. I guess you could potentially task that assignment.
Thank you.
So council, we think that uh. We should have the public safety committee meet and move that forward so we can get to the ambulance board. Uh, and have that, I think probably the sooner the better, you know, for the fiscal year coming up. So, um, I don't know if you guys wanted to look at your schedule in the next day or so. Try to come up with something, let Lee know and then we'll move that forward.
But, but like Robbie said, I guess it depends on.
Right, right. I think, I, but I think that's, that's after that, right? That'll be a following meeting.
I, yeah, we would probably invite them to.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask that, um. That we have a motion. We said a motion in order to approve the, the recommendation. And that would be, I'm sorry, do me again, motions.
We would have, uh, we would request a motion to direct the public safety committee. In conjunction with the fire chief and EMS administrator to represent the city at the West Liberty ambulance board meeting. For the work of producing a staffing model, budget plan and authorization for reserve funds.
I agree. I make the motion that we move direct the public safety committee and making that meeting possible.
You didn't want to say every word you did. Okay, there is a motion.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, so, is there any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, three zero. Okay. Uh, the way we are on to reports, why don't we go ahead and start with Leo, the city engineer?
Thank you, mayor. Okay, we've got about four things going on right now in the city. The water risk and resiliency study is ongoing. And just to remind you, that is due by the end of June. We are on schedule to submit that to the state at the end of June. Um, well, number two, we've agreed with Northway to go forward with the brushing and cleaning and televising of the casing. They were, in their agreement with us, they, they had mentioned they would start in mid-June. It sounds like they're still at that place. And then, um, city hall, we already talked about the change order and some of the, the construction going on there. And then finally, we do have a, an agreement to alley over at the library. Um, for some improvements of the, I think, the downstairs area. And I think that's all we have at this time. Any questions?
Leo, I was just going to add, um, with the city hall real quickly, again. I think council, you know, they're aware that, you know, we have a building that was built for one purpose and has been. Um, you know, changed several times and, and then the age of the building. Uh, and that is with any type of project that you're renovating or upgrading. You know, you run into, you know, electrical situations, walls that's there that wasn't there. Um, I don't know. I could go on and on, but so that, that's, that's some of the, the change order information. And as Leo was saying, though, we'll provide more details, but that is, a bigger part of it is what they ran into and they're. And I know, Mr. Kim, Tara is working diligently with the construction company. Um, to make sure that we're coming up with a fiscal plan. Um, and a, we're going to do it right. We're not going to just put band-aids on things to get us into the next phase. Um, the, the city engineers are looking at this as, as a, making sure that we're looking at this as we expand in the future. That, you know, they're covering those bases. And again, we have a requirement to, to make code. So. Um, does that sound about right, Leo? I mean.
That, that, that's perfect. Yep. And we need to, we need to put some of that into that change order when we officially submit that also.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, that now is for Leo. Okay, thank you, Leo. We are on to city attorney. Jamie, do you have anything to say, counsel?
No.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure, since you're here.
No, I appreciate it.
City council members, any different city boards or meetings that any of you guys have attended?
I did have to get maybe two weeks ago.
Anything particular of it? Okay. Let's go ahead and start with interim city manager, Hanson. Is there any highlights, anything that you want?
Yeah, actually in the packet, I had provided the reports from the police chief search. Um, and it lays out the schedule that's being proposed by the public safety committee. Um, and I don't know if Robbie wants, Robbie or the mayor would like to add anything to this. They are recommending for. Um, candidates be invited to the in-person interviews. Um, I know council member McFerrin asked the question of who the community leaders are. We'll talk about that later in the closed session. And we did invite several people to participate in that. And really just confirm, confirming these things that are, that are occurring. Um, and I've conducted background check. We're just waiting for DCI reports for, for the candidates at this point for those. Um, as far as the city manager search, we're going to get into that.
Sounds great. We're on to water and sewer superintendent, Danny Goodell. Have you seen him tonight?
I'm not seeing Danny.
Okay. Uh, if you guys have any questions over his report or anything, please contact Lee or Danny and. We can answer those. We're going to go ahead to Craig Jergens with the water treatment. Anything you want to add or highlight with the report, Craig?
Oh, not really at this time. I just wanted to say that Edgar, myself, and maybe Mac will be attending. The job fair at the high school tomorrow. So we're going to do a little deal as far as for the city for that. Other than that, I really don't have anything.
Yes.
Thank you.
He does have one more thing because we have to give him a congratulations. Craig, what did you pass?
I passed my grade four test.
Oh, great. Congratulations.
And Jerry Cruz passed his grade one also, so.
Very awesome.
Okay, thank you.
You guys don't know, also, a grade four operator in the state of Iowa is very, very difficult. And there's not a lot of them. So very, very big congratulations.
Okay, so that means you're not leaving us then, right, Craig?
He's there forever.
That's correct. I don't have anywhere else to go anyway. I just appreciate you giving me the opportunity.
Thank you. And, and, and I think Craig and, and also Danny Goodell, because it's uh. Within, and we're, those, that's part of some of the administrative staff and some of the city councils. Wishes trying to go ahead and grow and have opportunities from within instead of. The city to try to, and, and give our current employees, you know, that opportunity to show that. Congratulations, Craig. And talk.
Thank you.
Mayor, if you don't mind, in my re, in my staff meeting agenda, Danny did report that Mac passed. And then also Edgar passed his treatment certification. So there's a couple more in the water departments. We'll make sure to congratulate them as well.
And then we had Adam Reinhardt too. So I had a list that I have coming up in my report. Um, that will provide, again, all of our, our staff members. And it, it has been, you know, challenging, again, with COVID. Some may think, oh, well. You know, you can study from at work and, but it makes it more challenging because, you know, you're not participating in a group. You know, you're not going to those group settings where there, uh, you can get some scenarios and, and connect with other. You know, you're not going to those group settings where there, uh, you can get some scenarios and, and connect with other folks. So. Um, that, that did add to the challenges, but, um, all of our staff members that were. Um, needing to meet those certifications are right on track and are doing a great job, so.
Great. Maybe sometime in the future when COVID's all over, we can have an employee appreciation luncheon or. Hookout that like we've had in the past.
That'd be nice.
Just because, you know, you know, not only. Every department, you know, with COVID has faced, you know, stress and, and different work environments and conditions and. And it does kind of put a stress on individuals when they're outside their, you know, comfort zone, or at least their normal routine. So. Let's look at that. Uh, Nick Heath, is Nick on tonight?
No, I thought I saw.
Oh, there he is. Nick, any, uh, anything, uh? Highlights or anything you want the council to know?
Uh, just, uh, we had a couple repairs that needed to be done at the pool since it's set for extended period of time. Uh, we got that. Kind of fixed up today. We finished those, uh, so everything is up and running. Uh, we'll, we'll get, uh, we'll start working with the slide here this week if the. Weather allows us to be out there and get that started. So, uh, we should be ready for June fifth to open.
So, uh, I hear you have a new toy, new toy, uh, with the, uh, swimming pool on the bottom of.
Our, uh, our basic, we got a robot that'll clean the pool basically, uh, so. We bought that last year, but we didn't get to use it. And today we did training with the company on it and, uh, yeah, so it's pretty exciting. This will cut down on staffing hours. Uh, having to stay late at night or closing the pool down, uh, during regular business hours to get the pool cleaned, so. It'll be beneficial.
Just to add, Nick, um, you also received a certification.
Yep, I re, got recertified with my CPO for, and that's, uh, good for the next five years to operate our pool.
Congratulations, Nick.
Thank you.
Council, do you have anything for Nick? Hey, thank you. Have a nice evening, Nick. We are on to library director. And Ally, uh. So do we have any good reports? I know that Leo talked about, uh, a little bit about assisting with.
Yeah. We are, um, going to be, uh, looking at upgrading the room in which you are currently. Um, and so that'll be a decision made by the library board tomorrow. Um, and then we are almost all wrapped up with the youth department renovation. Um, we should be, um, good to open on, uh, the youth department on June seventh, which is when the summer reading program will kick off.
Oh, great. Ally, do we?
Huh? Highly recommend that everyone get their kids, grandkids, nieces, nephews, neighbors, all signed up for the summer reading program.
Ally, have we have any utility bills or anything back to kind of give us an idea of, uh?
Yes. We have seen a decrease in, um, the utility bills that we've had. Um, since the, uh, update to the HVAC in, um, September, October.
Great. Any further questions for Ally? Thank you, Ally. And we are on to the last, uh, and this is fire chief Kurt Sickles. Is Kurt still with us?
Yeah.
I don't.
I'm here.
Okay, just continually move. Sorry about that.
All right. Uh, I really have nothing else to share, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we will be per, uh, involved in that job performance at the high school tomorrow as well. Both firing in EMS.
Great, great. Uh, Kurt, did, did you hear our discussion earlier about the Public Safety Committee? And getting together with the ambulance and, uh, then having a meeting with the ambulance board to try to figure out staffing?
Yes, sir, I did. Appreciate that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Kurt? No? Thank you, Kurt. Have a nice evening.
Here.
We are now at the bottom of our agenda. We have, uh. Three closed sessions, uh, so we will, just so everybody knows, we will. Flow, go into closed session, come out of closed session, go into closed session three, three separate times. So, uh, and so I just wanted to explain that. And this will be, uh. Uh, closed sessions with just the council and any participants that are involved, uh, in the closed session. Uh, I'll go ahead and, uh. Read the first one, just so if anybody's on there. The first, uh, closed session would be, uh, reference twenty-one point five point one subsection J, and that's to discuss. Uh, purchase or sale of particular real estate. The second one will be, uh, the same code section, but subsection C, and this is to discuss strategic. Uh. With council in matters, uh, litigation or litigation is imminent. And also the last one would be the subsection I, and this is to evaluate professional competency of individual whose appointment, hiring. Performance or discharges being considered when necessary to prevent needless and. Irre- irreparable injury to that person's reputation. And, you know, and if that person's requested a closed meeting. So, the first one.
Do we make motions one at a time?
Yes.
Okay, motion to go into closed session. For twenty-one point five point one J. In discussion of sale of property.
Okay, is there a second? There's a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Passes three zero. We are in closed session. Okay, okay. Uh, council is back into open session. Uh, from the first closed session. Is there a motion to go into the second closed session, which is twenty-one? Oh, sorry about that.
Yep.
Now, I skipped over it.
Um.
No, okay.
Yep, on your appropriate follow-up and.
Yep. So is there any discussion, reference closed session? Any action?
Um, Mr. Mayor, if you will allow me to make a recommendation. Um, I would like to make a recommendation for council to consider, um. Sending the, the, um, sending this back to the building and grounds committee, um, to review and, um. Any type of, uh, you know, potential of the sale of the property agreement, um, and then at. A considerable time that they would bring it back. To council.
Or possible, we'll get other alternatives that may be there. And we also need to check on some other. Uh, things to make sure that, you know, that Dutton will and some of the other.
Yeah, just to shorten it up, uh, a recommendation to have public or have the building and grounds committee review.
We don't need a motion for that, do we?
Just.
Motion to send it back to.
Oh, okay.
Building and grounds.
Motion to send it back to building and grounds.
It's motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Building and grounds. Well, that's Diane and Dave. Okay. You're in a lot of meetings tonight. Okay, now, I'm sorry. Now we are on to the second closed session. This is, uh. Iowa code section twenty-one point five point one subsection C.
Motion to go into closed session, twenty-one point five point one sub subsection C. Discussing strategies with council in regards to litigation matters.
Okay, here's motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? We'll start with councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Passes three zero. We are in closed session. We are back into closed or open session. There is no action. Uh, reference the second closed session. Is there a motion, uh, for the third closed session?
Motion to go into closed section, Iowa code section twenty-one point five point one subsection I.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Uh, to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance. Or discharges being considered when necessary to prevent needless, irreparable injury to that individual's reputation and that individual requests a closed session.
Sorry, second? There's a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
We are back into closed session. Uh, there is no action, uh, to be made, uh, from this closed session. There is one item that I would like to, uh, ask the Public Safety Committee to do that, uh, wasn't on the agenda, but I'm directing them. Uh, to reach out to the rural fire board. Um, to, um, discuss signing the amendment that, uh. Uh, takes the current agreement and it extends it to September thirtieth. Um, we have not heard or received that amendment back that, uh. Allows that extension. We have, uh, provided it. To their, uh, attorney, but we have not heard anything back and we are getting close to being in June. And without that signature or that agreement from them. Uh, that would then end on June thirtieth. So. If you guys could reach out to the board members and see if, uh, where they're at with that. Because I'd love to have that signed so we can have that extra time. And that is all from the mayor, uh, would like a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's motion and second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? We are closed.